This is the first meeting of the three meetings being reported.
Welcome to this club meeting on Monday, November 15, 2021. In attendance is myself, Russell Fox, acting as chair, Doug Mogul, Town Council Ben Coyle, Minister of Transit Assistant, Robin Solak. Mr. Smith, could you start us off with the pledge of allegiance, please?
I can give up and we get served.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing I need to say is public comments. Try to do this starting with row one like Mr. Dede does. I shouldn't mention Mr. Dede isn't here. He's out on medical and he always needs that. Row one, any public comments? Just put your hand, you put your hand first.
Just to let everyone know, on Saturday, November 27th, Saturday after Thanksgiving, across the country, there's small business Saturday. So we're trying to get people in this area to visit small businesses, using a few bucks of your spending money. Everything I have is on Walmart.com. Small businesses have a few signs and stuff. They'll have a...
It could be gift certificate, truck or course, a gas station. Could be furniture, could be pastry, could be breakfast or lunch or dinner or whatever it might be. Think of the small ones.
Thank you, Mike. If you, I probably should say, if you could come forward so the owl could see you and if you could state your name and address, please.
Sure. Michelle Craft, 152 Bercher. So, Russ, I wanted to start by addressing your comments from, and report from the last meeting. I wanted to start by addressing your comments and report from the last meeting about the violations on the North Pond property. Since I'm the one who reported the incident in the first place and I took the pictures of the photos, obviously, I want the damage to be corrected. However, I take huge issue with the way you presented the entire situation. You made it really clear, you don't know the property and you don't know its history. Perhaps this is why you tried to block the purchase of it. You stated it's obvious that people have been cutting and clearing to establish a beach, always been a beach in our bright times. Vegetation didn't go down to the water and need to be replaced unless you're talking about from 14,000 years ago. As evidenced, I have this picture from the Sayworth Pond calendar, 50 years of a beach, and it's not Jones Beach, it's King's Beach. Big part of Southwood history. There were cottages over there, 36 of them. It was open from 1920 to 1969, it was a dance hall. Then it became private property. Fortunately, that person was conservation-minded and wanted that property preserved. They were patient with the town. They waited years for the property purchase to go through because that was the way they wanted it to be done, without development. That property unfortunately has always been subject to people using it inappropriately with dirt bikes and things like that driving on it. People had parties over there, bonfires and things like that, we know that. But that's always happened. That happened when it was private property, it's been going on for decades. The fact, actually, now that it's town-owned and more people are using it appropriately, actually, that has cut down. And Chief Landis said it very clearly last time that we met. It's actually better now that the town owns it. So you said it was a crime chain, $5 million spent in a 15-year bond. It is a crime chain. You know why? Because the CPC could have done the bond themselves with no tax implication to this town. But because it was hijacked and friends and family were appointed to it to vote it down, that's why it's a tax implication, that's why it's a crime chain. So that's on you guys, that is not on the town. You also stated how it should be used responsibly. You made a huge issue over what a few people did that was inappropriate. When in truth, you know what's actually happened over on that property? Dozens and dozens of volunteers have put in countless hours to clean up that property and make it look more like it was supposed to in its natural state. When the cottages were over there, there were tons and tons of stuff dumped. There was metal and appliances, glass, bottles and things like that, all kinds of trash and garbage. In fact, we took, I don't know how many dump truck loads full of garbage off of there. We had volunteers from Conservation Commission, from Community Preservation Commission, from Citizens Restoring Congammon, from the Boy Scouts, and they all worked over there. John Wally loaned dump trucks, he loaned mules, and the DPW worked with us to be able to have that all deposited so that we could get rid of all of that, clean up that property. It was a tremendous effort. Scott Snyder Bruce, Vice President of CRC, also organized a cleanup of the shoreline over there, went through pulling out all of the docks and debris that were left around the shoreline. People spent an entire Saturday over there, again, over dozen volunteers doing that. And that's the commitment this town has to that property. That's how important it is, how precious it is to them, and that's going to continue. I will tell you that I have, you made a big issue out of how much money, thousands of dollars, it was going to cost with heavy equipment before we're going to fix things. I have a volunteer. John King has said that people spend his time and use his equipment to go over there and rectify some of the things that need to be done or barriers that need to be put up. I know I can get a small army of volunteers, but it would also be more than happy to dedicate their time to go over there and fix what needs to be done. But it's not fixing a beach that got created, that didn't happen. It's not growing vegetation down to the shoreline, there wasn't vegetation there. But when the state comes up with a plan and Southwood agrees to it, please let me know. And I would love to help orchestrate stopping the erosion that's over there. If we could possibly cut down on some of the, you know, ATVs or dirt bikes over there, that's almost an impossible job because they can kind of access it from anywhere, but we'd be happy to do whatever we can. John Wally had built fences and things over there when it was privately owned. If there's fences that need to go up, up on the property somewhere else, fine, down in the water, absolutely not. If you have a plan to fence off that water so that the community of this town cannot use that beach over there, you're going to have a big problem on your hands. Because that is our tax money that we use to pay for that. So I also, lastly, take issue with a member of the Conservation Commission, a sworn member of the Conservation Commission, calling out a resident who allegedly completed this work by name in our local papers. How is that professional? By name. And by the way, you don't know that it was that person. You suspect it was that person because you've heard they do cleanup over there. You don't know it. No one saw it. Yes, the tents have pulled up, yes, there's tracks. Could be a tenant, could be a family member, could be someone that borrowed their equipment. You really don't know. Using their name in the newspapers when they, I believe, probably thought they were doing something good is really inappropriate. And they were saying that in the newspapers to try to make themselves look better for their own violations, which is even worse. So it just doesn't make any sense to me. But I would like to be more careful about how you represent things, especially in regard to that property because of the history that we had in preserving it. And when it comes time to do the work and save the town money on the work that needs to be done over there, I'm the person to call and I would be happy to give any support we have for that. Thank you.
Anybody else in row one?
Diane Gale, 5-point Road Road. Being overlooked at the last meeting, Robin Solak sent me the Select Board meetings, the dates for the next meeting holidays. I had wanted those to be read out so people could plan around the holidays. So if you don't mind, I'll do that now. November 29th, December 6th, December 13th, December 21st. On another topic, I'm not going to talk about the specific OML complaints. You have your attorney here. But I do want to say that I did get a call from Mr. Coyle and we had a little chat about something that was set. On the 10/18 Select Board meeting, the day those complaints were delivered, the ad hoc cable TV committee was also listed under old business. At 1 hour and 40 minutes, Mr. Mogul says, "I don't think we should entertain any appointments to any boards or commissions based on the erroneous OML complaint until it's disposed of." That's a quote. Without proper investigation, you couldn't have known that that was erroneous and it turns out it was not. Secondly, you wanted to say, "I have two applications in front of me that I ask to send letters of interest, which I forwarded to Carl." And you said, "But those people will be unable to serve the town until this is resolved." And I asked Mr. Coyle about that, was that correct? That you could not carry on any business? And he said, quote, "Oh, no, I disagree with that statement." So while you tried to cast blame, delay and continued hardship on residents with crappy cable TV options onto a resident who brought a valid claim to the Select Board. It is you who owns that area. Citizens exercising their rights to not stop the wheels of progress in Town Hall, you decided to delay that, those qualified applicants who are serving the town at their earliest opportunity. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Anyone else in row one? Moving to row two. If you please come forward, state your name and address, please.
I'm not 82 yet, so I'm here.
If you could state your name and address first, please.
This is Cindy Leamro, 10132 Randall Road. And I'm here to tell you that you need to start doing things the right way. And I have to commend Mr. Mogul. I had asked a question and I got an answer the same day. The other two of you never got back to me a hundred years ago. But I have to say, that was very nice and you told me exactly what happened. I like to say to people that the large projects out there, like the one that I won't name that just went by, do not find us. We find them. And I don't want to see that happen again because that is not what we are all about. And you have to get back on the page of listening to the people and what we want for the town because you're elected to do that. And we don't want to live in West Springfield. I moved from there in 1992 to here. And I've always wanted to live here. And I've loved it and I don't want to see it go down the drain. Thank you.
Row two. Row three. Row four. Anyone else? Was Mogul or Lisa, anybody on Zoom?
Mr. Fox, just before we proceed. I want to apologize. At the last meeting, I made an egregious error. And I was castigated in another open meeting that succeeded this one. I gave the wrong name for King's Beach. I said Jones Beach, I was thinking of places I went in my youth and I misspoke. And it was held up in another meeting and again tonight, my sincere apologies. I knew it was King's Beach. There's 100 people staring at me here on Zoom and I misspoke, that I apologize. Thank you.
All right. Let me acknowledge Payables Warrant Number 2211B dated 11/2/2021 in the amount of $257,069. Acknowledge Payroll Warrant Number 2212 dated 11/8/2021 in the amount of $230,421. I need a motion to accept the minutes of November 1st, 2021.
Make a motion to table the minutes of November 1st. I did not have time to review those.
Okay, motion is made to table, all in favor, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay, those minutes have been tabled. Let's see, the first thing on the agenda, 6:02, we're running a little behind. Town Council Ben Coyle regarding discussion, open meeting law complaints from Diane Gale, Marissa Cook Obergan, Dennis Clark. Okay, Mr. Coyle.
Good evening, thank you. As this board knows, the town recently received multiple open meeting law complaints, mostly centering around actions taken by the Select Board at the September 27th, 2021 meeting regarding the appointments/reappointments and/reappointments of various members to various boards and committees. The Select Board reviewed the complaints and appointed Russell Fox to work with me as Town Council to review the complaints and provide responses relative thereto. Mr. Fox and I met here at Town Hall to review the complaints, review documents, and formulate a response on behalf of the Select Board, which responses were forwarded to the complainants last week. In reviewing the complaints, together with prior decisions of the Attorney General's Office and various statutory provisions and case law, I was of the opinion that there were potential violations of the open meeting law and Mr. Fox and I discussed various remedial measures that could be taken by the town to remedy those. Mr. Fox desired for the good of the town to expedite the remedial measures for the good of the community rather than waiting for potential future intervention in rulings from the AG's office, which could take many months. The potential violations and remedial measures that we discussed are as follows. First, the agendas. The potential violation that I saw is that the Select Board did not provide the specificity required by the Attorney General in the posting of the agenda relative to the appointment/reappointment agenda items contained therein. The Board had historically carried the agenda items with a generic term, appointment or reappointment. In reviewing the Attorney General's decisions and opinions, the town is required to include the positions and applicant's names in the agenda that the Board intends to discuss. In the event that the appointments cannot fit on the meeting notice, the Select Board should reference that additional information can be found at the Clerk's Office or another easily accessible location. The remedial action that I think the Board needs to take in regard to this violation would be to make sure that all of the agenda heretofore include as much specificity and detail as possible when discussing any appointments which will include the name and the position of the potential applicant. The second allegation that was contained in some of the open meeting law complaints was an allegation that there were deliberations that occurred outside of an open meeting by members of the Select Board. In reviewing the allegation and discussing the allegation with members of the Board, it was categorically denied, all members categorically denied any outside meetings other than at the open meeting. That was included in there as well. Relative to the appointments and reappointments, although I think that the appointments and reappointments to various boards may be outside of the jurisdiction of the Attorney General's Office as I don't believe that that in and of itself would amount to an open meeting law violation. In speaking with Mr. Fox, and my opinion is that we need to try to correct what I saw as some errors that the town had in regard to some of the appointments and reappointments. So by way of history, I wanted to provide you with some information that I found as I went through the records. I understand that the Select Board, beginning as early as 2018 and definitely in 2019, changed the manner in which they were making appointments to making appointments for one year only instead of the statutorily-based, in most cases, three-year appointments to various boards and commissions. The reason discussed by the Board for making the one-year appointments was that the records of the Select Board's office as the appointing authority and the Town Clerk's office as the record-keeping authority were different. Realizing that these discrepancies occurred, the Select Board, together with the Town Clerk, examined a best practice to rectify the situation and found that a software program existed to assist towns in these matters. The town, at the May 202019 Town Meeting, approved funds for the purchase of the software. There was a delay in the implementation of the software due to the COVID-19 pandemic and it wasn't available or wasn't rolled out by the Clerk's Office until this year. When the one-year appointments were made, there were no open meeting law violations that were filed at the time. There were no objections that were made, to my knowledge. And it basically became the new way that you guys did things until we could get the software up and running. The Select Board in 2021, with the software being available, then made the appointments for the three-year terms. Throughout this investigation and my review of the open meeting law complaints, I informed the Select Board that making the one-year appointments was not in compliance with the law and that the appointments should have been made for three years. So since the one-year appointments were made in error, they were essentially a legal nullity. And in my opinion, and in order to review and resolve the issues, we needed to examine the records to determine the best manner in which to proceed to have the appointments and reappointments done in a manner consistent with the law. So there were two main appointments that were included in the open meeting law complaints. And the first one was Ms. Marissa Cook Obergan. And it involves her appointment to two commissions, both to the Conservation Commission and the Agricultural Commission. In my review of the records from the town, the initial Conservation Commission appointment for Ms. Cook Obergan in 2019 should have been for a three-year period and should have expired on June 30th, 2022, not for the one year that was initially stated by the Select Board when it made the appointment. I believe that Ms. Cook Obergan's appointment to the Agricultural Commission in 2019 also should have been for a three-year term and therefore expires on June 30th, 2022. Since Ms. Cook Obergan's appointment was technically not up for reappointment in 2021, she is still a member of both the Conservation and the Agricultural Commission. I understand that the Select Board received a resignation from Ms. Rose Hannah relative to her appointment to the position as a member of the Conservation Commission. So by accepting the resignation and Ms. Hannah providing the resignation, we're able to rectify the issue and be able to have Ms. Cook Obergan back on and not have any issues relative thereto. The Select Board received the resignation. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law 41, Section 109, the Select Board should forward that resignation to the Town Clerk so that the Town Clerk can note the records accordingly. In regard to the Agricultural Commission, I understand that there were still seats available, so there really weren't any issues with having Ms. Obergan or won't be any issues with Ms. Cook Obergan coming back on. But I also do understand that Mr. Bob Mooka resigned from the Agricultural Commission and his resignation should also be submitted to the Town Clerk's office. Relative to Mr. Dennis Clark, in my review of the records, the annual reports and the records available with the town relative to his appointment on the Agricultural Commission, I believe that Mr. Clark's appointment to the Agricultural Commission in 2019 should have been for a three-year term and therefore expires on June 30th, 2022. Since Mr. Clark was technically not up for reappointment in 2021, he is still a member of the Agricultural Commission. Again, I indicated that I believe that there are seats available on the Agricultural Commission, so there aren't any issues there. So I believe that the Select Board should ratify and confirm that the following appointments and appointment expiration dates relative to these particular individuals. Insofar as the Conservation Commission is concerned, Ms. Marissa Cook Obergan, her expiration date should be 6/30/2022 and she should be a member of this Conservation Commission forthwith. The Agricultural Commission, Ms. Cook Obergan should be a member and her expiration date should be 6/30/2022. And Mr. Clark should also be a member with his expiration date being 6/30/2022. If you have any questions relative thereto, I can...
Would it be advisable, Town Council, to make that in the form of a motion?
I believe it would be.
All right, so I'll make that in the form of a motion.
To be clear, I'll read the motion out loud of what the motion should be.
The motion that I believe the Select Board should make is that the Select Board should ratify and confirm the following appointments and appointment expiration dates. To the Conservation Commission, Ms. Marissa Cook Obergan with an expiration date of 6/30/2022. To the Agricultural Commission, Ms. Marissa Cook Obergan with an expiration date of 6/30/2022. And Mr. Dennis Clark with an expiration date of 6/30/2022.
I'll second that motion.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Ben, any other?
I believe that's it.
All right, we thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen. All right, the next thing that we'll be going to is the Board of Assessors regarding a public hearing on a tax classification for fiscal year 2022. I'm going to read the following notice. Thomas Southwick, Notice of Public Hearing Select Board Tax Classification Fiscal 2022. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 15th, 2021, at 6:05 PM in the Auditorium of the Town Hall to decide whether or not all classes of property should be taxed at the same rate for fiscal '22. Interested taxpayers may send written information on their views to rsolak@southwickma.net or mail to Select Board Office, 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. 01077. See Select Board webpage for Zoom details for the November 15th, 2021 meeting agenda. Joseph J. Diddy Chairman, Russell Fox Vice Chairman, Doug Mogul Clerk. All right, I need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
I'll second that, all in favor, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay, I'm going to invite the Board of Assessors up to the front and speak as loud as you can, Al. I believe that we have our Director of Assessments on Zoom.
Ron Moore. That's his.
Do we have Sue Gore on Zoom? Maybe she'll join us later. Al, I apologize. If you want to state your name and address and your position, please.
Al Hoyt, 85 Bercher Ave., Town Assessor. We wish to maintain residential factor.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open up the floor. This is a public hearing. If you have something to say, I'm going to ask you, please come to the front of the room so the owl can pick you up and people on Zoom can hear you. I'll start with row one. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Row two. Row three. Yes, come on up.
Cynthia Marshall, 45, Coles Hill Road. I'm just wondering, has there ever been any facts and figures put together to aspire to our taxable business commercial income, so to speak, revenue that we get from them? And if raising the business/commercial rates by any type of percentage, like all our surrounding cities and towns around us, how much that would generate for this town? Have there been any studies done on our commercial tax rate base? I mean, what we generate from them?
There's a couple answers here, I prefer the chair if I may. I mean, we have a tax rate recapitulation here. That's why I was reading through the paper, I was paying rapid attention, believe me. Of residential, commercial, industrial, and personal tax from the levy percentage... and personal tax from the levy percentage and the tax rate for fiscal year 2021 recapitulation from the Mass. DOR, Divisional Local Services Bureau of Accounts. I would be more than happy to share this with yourself or anyone who would like a copy of it, because I think that's exactly the question you just asked, which shows you as a percentage in dollars, what the valuation is by class, and what the contribution by dollars are. So you could actually take this and manipulate, and I mean it in the nicest way, manipulate the number to see what an impact change on one classification would have on the overall tax generation and tax classification. If you'd like, I can email this to you tomorrow, or you can have it today if you'd like this copy.
No, I'll get you my email.
I have it.
Is there...
Is that all right, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Mogul. I forgot, Row Three, Row Four. Anyone else that would like to make a public comment concerning this? All right, with that, is there anybody on Zoom? I don't see anyone, Mr. Vice Chairman. Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the recommendation of the Board of Assessors.
So moved.
All right, that'd be a residential factor of one. I will second that. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
All right. Al, thank you, and thank you for your group and all your hard work. It's a thankless job. I know, I did it for 10 years, but thank you very much. All right, we're moving on. Next thing I have here is a meeting with Chief Landis and Lieutenant Banish regarding five police department policies, updates and creations of traffic control officer classification. I don't see the chief, but we have a lieutenant.
Would you like to start with the policies or the traffic control officer?
Well, before we begin, if you could just give a general thing, that this is something that's been ongoing for the past year, a review of all our policies, and if you want to just start by explaining that to...
So basically what you have before you, you've got five policies here. These are existing policies we already have. Every year, the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association goes through and updates these based on changes in the law. These are just relative to those changes that have come about. We're looking at updating our motor vehicle inventory policy, our arrest policy, eyewitness identification policy, interrogating suspects and arrestees, and our testifying court policy. So the only change you're going to see in here, I do have, these numbered, our numbering's a little bit different, so that is actually going to be a little bit in flux, so that would change. But everything within the policies themselves is what we're asking for, for revisions.
Okay. As in the past, when we got the policy, the Board has the right to review and get back to the police department, but we also have the right to just accept the policies as recommended by the police chief.
I've reviewed them, and I'm prepared to move forward, depending on where you are with this.
I'm prepared, if you want to make a motion.
I'd make a motion to accept these policies as presented.
All right, Russ Fox will second that. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Very easy, Lieutenant. Thank you very much, and good job.
Okay, so moving along to the traffic control officer. I'm sure you've had a chance to read my cover letter that I put in, but this is basically a result of police reform that we're in the midst of right now. We've been having issues with being able to fill some of our traffic details out there for actually a number of years now. With reform coming, we're going to have an even smaller pool to be able to fill some of these with. So one of the things that's come about is a traffic control officer, which would be generally some of the people who aren't going to be continuing on as reserve officers. They would have to be previously reserve officers, even eligible for this, to make them continue to keep up their CPR and first responder. This is a non-post position, so we'll have to go through all their accreditation. There is no right to carry the firearm on that, so this is truly a civilian position.
And this is due to the police reform that's being... Mogul, you want to digest?
I'm ready to move forward. I discussed this with the lieutenant and the chief separately, and it's a brilliant idea, actually. I commend them both for suggesting this. It's a good utilization of manpower, it's a good utilization of budget dollars, and a good idea to fill shifts that have gone wanting. We've actually had construction and tree trimming and other types of things get canceled because we couldn't fill the detail part of the work. So this will hopefully go some method of, some way in helping that. So I think it's a good move. You know, the state had allowed in previous years the use of flaggers. Fact of the matter is, it really didn't, it was in name only. The certifications, accreditations, and then the firms that you had to hire that hired the flaggers didn't make it less expensive or more available. So this is actually probably a preferable method for us. And with the Reform Act making some of our reserve officers going to be unable to continue, this is a great potential avenue to provide traffic control at job sites. So I'm in favor of it. I would be more than willing to make a motion to move this policy forward.
I'll accept that motion if you want to make it.
I'll second. You'll second them? I'll make the motion.
All right, I'll second it. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Very easy, Lieutenant. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is, we're going to be meeting with Tom Fitzgerald, Acting Health Director, Sue Brask, a member of the Board of Health. Terry Mish is the liaison from the Finance Committee. If we could drag a couple chairs up there, that'd be great, because we need you to be right up front here, Sue, so when you're talking, people on Zoom can hear you. Terry, you join him or not?
Aye.
We want to talk about vacant positions.
Sue, you're going to have to speak up a lot louder.
We want to talk about the vacant positions for our health director. Come on in.
Yeah. Would you mind using the microphone, please?
And you can sit down.
You can sit down.
Sit down.
So we have vacant positions for our health director, our secretary, part-time secretary, and we've got a verbal resignation from our health nurse. That just kind of overwhelmed. So that's what we want to talk about, but if you're running behind, this isn't a good time, you want to wait to get the full board?
No, this is too important. And why don't you do an introduction of Tom, so people know that Tom has come back to help us.
Yes, introducing health director. It's also his time as we can find a better health director. So really, that's the reason why we're here today. He is health director, left for another job. And we voted that he was selected in the Finance Committee, given to increase the salary and then to the applications, responsibilities, that they have to live in, not just because of COVID, but non-COVID related issues. So that's why we're here to talk.
Right. And before we begin, Tommy, thank you for coming back and helping your community. We appreciate it. Sue, what do you think?
Well, we have a kind of a letter here, just stating all the things that the health director does, and that, you know, in the past 20 months, Tammy was indispensable for us. But not only that, we have to do restaurant inspections, housing inspections, Title V, inspections permitting witness testimonial tests, private well and public water quality, air quality, water complaints, housing appearances in court, court inspections, camp rounds, temporary rents, investigating these things.
Can you use the microphone, please, so people on Zoom are marking that they can't hear you?
Plus, the director interacts with all the other boards. And we want to increase salary to make it more competitive to other sellers out there. We've gotten three applicants, one person turned us down when we told them what the salary was. The other two people don't have the qualifications we're asking for. They could probably get them if they wanted to take courses to get them, but we're to tile for Tammy's level. So we want to go back over to this.
Have you met with the Finance Committee yet, or if you're coming here first?
Coming here first.
Okay, all right. Terry, did you want to say?
I'm going to make a suggestion that they come before us. Just contact, if you can contact our Nina. Do I need that? You don't. I was going to suggest that you guys, if you can take that statement, to your leisure group, before our next meeting is going to be November 30th, after Thanksgiving. And then, just, you know, so we have copies of what those duties are, which you were asking about. And that's just to inform us, we really, we don't have the power to actually set the dollar mouth, but we can recommend it or not recommend it at town meeting.
So it's approved at town meetings, Select Board doesn't approve it, or do you back it up or it comes out of?
Well, sorry, procedurally, the Select Board presents a budget. Legislatively, town meeting votes to accept the budget. That becomes, it's town meeting that actually sets the budget, right? That's the article you vote on at town meeting. So the interesting here, and we discussed this, I was on the Board of Health meeting a couple of weeks ago, Terry, is Board of Health is unique as a board in town because they are the actual employer of the health agent, right? Unlike every other, almost every other position in town, which fall into the Personnel Board of the Select Board. But the wrinkle is, the budget is passed at town meeting and endorsed by the Finance Committee and the Select Board going to town meeting. So there was a bit of mechanics about, how would, how can the Board of Health make a promise that the budget can't necessarily keep, right? And so how do you coordinate all that? And I'm paraphrasing, but that's generally the discussion we had, was they hire the health agent, they actually set the salary of that position, but it still comes out of the regular budget process that's done through the Board of Select and Finance Committee and the budget hearings, and then ratified at town meeting.
So you're saying, then, we can't set salary until town meeting?
No, I don't, I didn't.
No.
And if I did, that was not my intention. My intention was just to kind of explain how we kind of got into this tail chasing its dog kind of scenario with this. You know, in your, I think, under the budget, you know, talk to your liaison, you've had a gap now where you have, you know, you're paying an interim health director, you're going to have no health director for a period of time. So for budget dollars, within this budget year, you probably don't have a problem. But you do need to put a budget together for next year that is going to have to carry a higher salary if that's what you're looking to do. That's what I'm really trying to say. There's probably budget dollars out there in this fiscal year, what's left, based on the absence of the health director and what you're paying, probably out of that line item for the interim. And by the way, thank you again for coming back, I do appreciate it, and the town does too, right? So that's the question.
So we have to wait till November 30th then? We have to wait till November 30th to meet with finance.
That's our next meeting, yeah.
But I think you can start the ball rolling, Sue, having some informal discussions with your liaison and with your group. Question I had, the grant funding that Tammy got for that position, that shared position, is that affected now that she's left, or is that still...
As a matter of fact, we haven't got the money yet.
Okay.
The state hasn't appropriated, and we have a letter of intent.
Okay, okay. So that's down the road then.
Is that in the next fiscal year budget, or is there money in this year's budget to fund that?
I think it's in this year's budget.
It's in this year's budget?
It's my understanding.
Because, you know, that's, and he raises a good point, that's an excellent avenue, right? If there's, especially if there's a source of funding and you're going to add the additional responsibility of administering that grant, some of that money that's going to come into the town for administering the grant could be allocated in that direction, potentially subject to the discussion with the Finance Committee and whatnot on how you're going to get from here to there, what you want to fill.
I don't know if we're sure, when the money does come in, who is notified of it.
Okay. Why don't I make this suggestion? If you would be willing to make a motion to appoint me to work as a liaison with the Board of Health...
Don't we normally do that for Joe, because he's not here?
We normally do, but he's laid off. And I think this is a matter that we want expedited.
I would gladly make the motion, given the issue. Right, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Mogul made a motion that I act as a liaison and work with you in the Finance Committee. I will second that motion. It's a roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay. We will get together before the 30th.
Okay, this is liaison for the health director, liaison to the contractor, for both groups?
To help to resolve all yours problems. How's that?
Okay.
All right, because we want to get it done.
Health secretary too?
Health secretary too.
Now's your chance, ask for more.
Okay, so...
He's a liaison.
We haven't done our agenda yet for Thursday. Do you want to attend that?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Mr. Mish, do you attend as the liaison? Okay.
I'll be...
Yeah, okay.
So we can talk about this.
And that way I can get any of the questions, and get our staff, and get the answers, and see if we can get the ball rolling a little bit quicker.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that fair?
Thank you.
Do you guys just do Zoom, or do you meet in person now?
We do it hybrid.
Hybrid, but the last meeting, we all met in person.
Upstairs?
Yes.
Okay. What time does it start?
Well, six to seven, we're having a work session, we don't have a secretary, we've got to do some checks. So seven?
Seven o'clock?
So we'll put you on one...
And Tommy's going to remind me?
I will.
Tommy's going to pick, no. I was just going to say, you can pick me up.
Sure. I don't know about that.
Seven fifteen.
Okay.
And you have to disinfect us.
We will.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next thing I see, we're going to meeting things. Okay, approved chair to sign the CDVG grant, discard lien on real estate for 197 North Lane in Granville.
With no objection, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to have the vice chair sign in the absence of the chair.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay, next thing is Wick 338, race schedule amendment for cycle-crossed bicycle event for December 2021. I believe that that's all on the property, if I read that correctly. Noel called to be sold, arrival is Saturday morning, totally self-contained on 338 property. We always had a good working relation with Mr. Johnson, and this is something new for Southwick, so it should be interesting. We're talking about 300 participants.
Non-motorized, correct?
Non-motorized.
It's non-motorized. I'll make the motion to amend the race schedule accordingly.
Okay, I'll second that amendment. A roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay. Approval of waiver for, approval waiver for solar pilot agreement for Gerardo and Breako projects related to merger per Town Council. Basically, this is the solar farms off of Congammon Road, not the ones that you see from the street, but the ones that are deeper down in. It's a merger, it doesn't change the amount of payment in lieu of taxes that paid to the town of Southwick. It's been reviewed by Ken Albano, Town Council, and he sees no problem with it.
Make the motion to approve the waiver.
Russ Fox will second. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay, adopt amended... Okay, adopt amended town repres- re-preserving vote to reflect the official legal written description of new precinct boundaries in the town of Southwick. This is something we've been discussing, uh, and this is what the town clerk has come up with to keep us in compliance. Uh, it appears that there's minor changes, but when people do go to vote, they'll have to kind of, uh, check the signs outside first, uh, to make sure that they're in the right line. A right line, you're right, to vote. So, need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amended town redistrict map and just end legal boundary descriptions as they are.
Okay, Russ Fox will second that. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Is this the original, Rob? Well, we're gonna sign it anyways.
It's on the counter.
Oh, wait, okay, then we won't sign that. Alright. Ratify, and I'll change this to vice chair to sign off on amended CDVGY fiscal 19 grant budget to transfer housing funds to engineering funds for Bungo Street project in the amount of $10,480. Randy, uh, our DPW director, do you have any comment on this, or?
I can explain if you want.
If you'd like to come up, sir.
Randy Brown, uh, DPW director. So this is, uh, the Bungo Street project is, uh, designed using, uh, CDVG funds right now. Uh, a couple of changes that came up during the design efforts that were to ask for, uh, transfer funds in the housing budget to engineering. Uh, first was the appropriate dry sewer line into design. And a second was because of the spoke of the project, the cost of the entire project on Bungo Street exceeded the amount that we could qualify in one, in one fiscal year. So we had to expend one money to, uh, basically break that project into two separate projects.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions, Doug?
Nope.
Okay, we'll make an informal motion.
So moved.
Russ Fox will second that motion. Uh, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay, next thing, correspondence from ag commissioner, chairperson, Bert Hanson. Oh, we received a, uh, email from Bert on November 2nd after our last meeting. Uh, talking about a meeting. Uh, after the action that was taken tonight, we want the chairman to get back to you to further discussions.
I think, uh, I think it's a long, long way.
Okay, alright. Thank you, sir.
Um, if I may, Mr. Hanson, you sent an email this afternoon as well. I think we need to just put, and, and I'll address some of the, um, one of the public comments from this evening. I think we need to, part of this information we received from the attorney tonight called our attention to some modifications that we need to make to the appointment process so we don't find ourselves right back in the place we were at as far as the posting and naming and so on and so forth. And that was what I was alluding to that night. You put a very valid suggestion in front of us. I'll confer with council tomorrow as to how that should be posted and confer with Carl Steinhardt to make sure a future posting carries, the proper appointing nomenclature necessary to be carried on a future agenda.
Uh, the next thing I have, administrative assistance inquiry to attorney general of the day, uh, excuse me, attorney of the day, state ethics commission in response regarding recent appointment of Kevin Solak as conservation, as a conservation commissioner. Uh, it was, uh, came back. There is no conflict. It'll be filed with the town clerk's office. Alright, uh, next thing, approve Prifty Park pump station design contract with tie-in bond in the amount of $58,000. Randy, I apologize, I didn't see that. You could have saved you a trip and we could have taken care of both of them while you're up here.
So at, uh, for the last meeting or two weeks ago, the board voted to authorize Harper funding for a small project, Prifty Park Pump Station upgrades. Uh, this is a project that was designed about five years ago when we restructured or rebuilt the, uh, Percher Air Pump Station. At that time, the funds were unavailable for the design, so sitting on the shelf waiting for funding available, funding to be available. Um, so Harper funding came around and we decided to utilize this one for this project. So it had to be forty, was a, uh, proposal from tie-in bond to do some design work to, uh, you know, reconfigure the original design. They carry that project to the construction.
Questions, Ms. Mogul?
Not at all.
Okay, make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Russ Fox will second it. We'll have a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Randy, thank you again. Alright, next thing is to approve town clerk treasurer collector Michelle Hill to represent Southwick as a member unit on the HCRRB retirement board as elected treasurer. By statute, I think we need to approve this, if I'm, if I'm correct. But it's, it's probably, uh, very good for our employees that Southwick will be represented on the retirement board. Uh, considering all the problems they seem to be facing.
I think this is about the best thing that could happen to them right about now, so I'll gladly make that motion.
Okay, Russ Fox will second it. A roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Uh, let's see. Next thing I have is Southwick Fire Department EMT pay rate change, third rider in training, and I believe we got a letter, uh, from Chief Anderson, Les Anderson. I think he's in the back of the room. Oh, I didn't see him. I'm sorry. Chief, I apologize. Come on up.
Um, so what, what you have in front of you is, um, something that was kind of held over from the past when we were hundred percent call force. And the, you would basically pay a EMT in training $30 for a shift, uh, with no other compensation. Uh, when we restructured that a year or so ago, that kind of stayed there. Um, and what we, obviously, it's kind of hard to get people to, you know, $30 to ride worth of 30 patients with the evaluation or more. So what we'd like to do is just, uh, we send that $30 and just pay them as an EMT, like, just like that we pay every, uh, EMT or paramedic that comes in and works on the pump. So there would be no training rate if you would, it would just be a straight period.
Questions?
No, I mean, this is part and parcel of our move. I mean, it's, you're in or you're out, so I, I support it.
Well, I absolutely support it. We've gone to full-time paramedic. That's a, a service this town wants and, and certainly needs. We're a gray in community, uh, an active community, uh, because of our recreation. So I, I would accept the motion to approve.
I gladly make the motion.
I will second that motion. A roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. Lieutenant Banish? Plug your dinner.
Plug my dinner?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, we're having a spaghetti dinner, I believe it is this Wednesday evening when we're at the VFW, I'm sorry.
Legion.
At the other, the Legion, from five to seven.
7:00 PM.
Seven.
And, uh, I can tell you, I was there for the, uh, animal shelter a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and the staff there did a fabulous job. It's a fabulous meal. I think it's only $7, so you can't go wrong.
You can't go wrong.
So bring your spouse or significant other and go over there and support our Southwick Police Association. Thank you very much, lieutenant.
Thank you, lieutenant.
I skipped over one.
Lieutenant Banish, okay.
I, I apologize. I'd like to, uh, have a motion to accept a $500 donation from the VFW Post 872, which presented the check to Chief Landis and Lieutenant Bishop at our Veterans Day ceremony this past Thursday. So if I could have a motion to accept, and that is for the K-9 unit.
Yep.
Okay.
And then appreciate their support at the Veterans Memorial Event that was held on the, the town common on November 11th last Thursday. And, uh, thankful for them for presenting a check to Chief Landis and Chief Lieutenant. So I'll make that motion.
Russ Fox will second it. It's a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay. Uh, new business, Mr. Mogul?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dee Dee isn't here, Mr. Steinhardt isn't here. The only thing I had under new business is the scouts will be collecting this Saturday, the 20th. As usual, there's usually a phone call that goes out under code red. Uh, that we're gonna have kids in the street picking up, uh, stuff. We've got to be extra careful, folks. And also, at the same time, it'd be really nice for the food bank if people are very generous this holiday season because they have quite the demand. So that's the only thing I had under new business. Old business, decision on any information for inserts to town-wide mailing for census. I'm still working on that. I don't know.
I'm all set.
Okay, so that's, if we could keep carrying that. Uh, North Pond violation, site visit with, uh, Southwick Police Department input from Fish and Game Agreement. As far as I know, the Fish and Game, uh, has not come back. Uh, we're, we're not in compliance with their plan of action. Uh, Lieutenant Landis, have you gone on that visit with the vice chair? He has not contacted you? Okay, so maybe we could reach out to him to see if that visit can, uh, take, take place. Uh, but, uh, Fish and Game, of course, will be developing a plan. Uh, it's really not a plan from the select board, it's a plan from Fish and Game. Okay, appointments for town boards and committees, cable TV. I know we have one name mentioned here. Um, are you comfortable, or do you want to get clear?
I'm wholly uncomfortable with making any appointments until we formulated a plan. We can have it done for next week.
Okay, then for our next meeting, we will work with town council to make sure that, uh, now they just found this new regulation, that we are in complete, um, compliance. And we will be addressing the cable TV, and we also have an application for, uh, uh, ag commission. And, but I, I'm, I'd, I'd like to reach out to the chairman of the ag commission, uh, because he had some thoughts on associate members. You know, so I'll be reaching out to, uh, you, Bert, if that's okay. Alright. Uh, let's see, uh, town hall roof design and project status. I know, uh, Mr. Steinhardt has been working on that. Uh, and we will continue and have an update for our next meeting. Uh, sewer system rates and IMA update. Randy, anything?
No updates since the last response.
Okay, thank you. Renewal of LLP with West Suffield, Connecticut. I know they have a new first selectman, so we're gonna have to reach out. Matter of fact, uh, my suggestion is we, if we could send a letter of congratulations to the new, uh, first selectman of West Suffield and ask to, uh, have a, a meeting with him.
You always have to have your ass in my face.
Discuss.
Dana.
Mr. Mogul, since you have been spearheading this, would you mind continuing spearheading this?
I would be glad to do it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, you got that about a letter of congratulations and, uh, trying to settle for a meeting. I know it'd be a new administration after six years, so, uh, I don't think it's something we need to do overnight, but, uh,
Dana.
Establish a rapport.
This damn cat.
Southwick, Talon, Granville Regional School District Fiscal 23 Budget Roundtable is scheduled
What?
5:30 PM at the Powdermill School Library. That's an FYI. Um, and you'll be good enough to send us all a reminder. Rob, thank you. Uh, conservation coordinator position option for Sheer Gold with, with Blanford. I know the manager, uh, is the new mayor of Holyoke, so that's kind of a limbo. Uh, Mr. Steinhardt is, uh, reaching out to find out, uh, uh, who the next person in charge will be. So we'll wait until we get an, uh, update from him. Mr. Mogul, any old business? No, sir. Okay, then the last thing I have, uh, before ending this meeting, because we'll be going into executive sessions not to reconvene. I just, on behalf of the select board, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope it's a safe one. We thank you very much, and good night. Alright. A motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General House, Chapter C, 30A, Section 21, 3, Chapter Group 1, 4, Section 1B, and CMR 20 dot oh three, 1B, regarding town council pending litigation, executive session regarding MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21, 3, Chapter 214, Section 1B, and CMR 29 point oh three, 1B, parentheses, regarding pending litigation. Uh, this board moves to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not to reconvene open session. Move to go into section to discuss strategy with respect to potential threat litigation. And the chair declared that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the lit- litigating position of the body and to not to reconvene open session. Uh, regarding Chapter 214, Section 1B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial, or serious interference with their privacy. Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in connection therewith to award damages. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Alright, we are adjourned. We're moving over to the other.